Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Gallatin City Council meeting for the 7th of June 2022. It is 6 o'clock exactly, 6:01 it just turned. Welcome you all this evening. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, our city engineer, Nick Tuttle, is going to offer the invocation, and Councilman Hayes is going to lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
If you will, pray with me. God, thank you so much for allowing us to gather here tonight to consider business here for the city of Gallatin. And Lord, I pray that you would be in our midst, that all that we do would be glorifying to you, that your wisdom would be here, that we would listen to your wisdom and your counsel, Lord, that you would help us to make peace with one another, that we would continue to see prosperity in our area, and that what we does, or what we do, would glorify you. We thank you so much for all this. We do pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. And Ms. Kettrell, if you'd call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander is not here yet. Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We don't have any minutes this evening, so we'll move along to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward, address any item that is on the evening's agenda. There's also a period of time at the end of the meeting where you can address items that aren't on the agenda. If you have an item that you're concerned about, you can bring it then if it's not on the agenda. Also, I want to remind you that there's a public hearing this evening. It's related to changes to the zoning ordinance, related to anything in the zoning ordinance that has to do with animal care facilities. So if you'd like to speak to that, you may wish to do so under public hearing, which is item number one on the agenda. But with that, public hearing on agenda, or public recognition on agenda-related items is now open, and you may come forward. Just introduce yourself. Give us your name and address, please. You'll be limited to five minutes.
My name is Bob Meola. I live at 425 Paisley Way here in Gallatin, and I want to bring up what my voters have been crying about for the last three or four weeks, the sewer department. And that's in your paperwork. Make sure you get that. We have a cracked pipe. We've called the sewer department. We have a flood in front of six homes. I have a problem in front of my home where the silt from the neighboring farm is coming in, and every time it rains, I've got sand all over the neighborhood, along with silt. Now, they did come out, took care of it, they cleaned it, but they said they were going to write a letter to the farmer. Only God knows if they did, but I heard nothing from the sewer department. Now, you folks have the power to do something with this farm. It's a nuisance problem. I read the charter. If the farmer doesn't take care of the problem, you could put a lien on it, you could take his farm, you could do all kinds of things, but you've got to do something because if this water keeps up in our neighborhood, it could be a sinkhole. And then, now you've really got a problem, not only with my neighbors and my voters, but with money. Now it's really going to cost you. That's it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. It sounds like it may be partly stormwater, too. Mr. Tuttle, who offered the invocation this evening, can help you with that. And Mr. Kellogg, raise your hand, so who knows who you are. He would be the public utilities fellow.
Good evening. My name is Mary Morgan. I live at 1035 Nichols Circle in Gallatin, where I have lived for the past 46 years. On ordinance number 0220528, number five on the agenda, concerns me greatly. Our development at this point is not included in the 50. We have under 50, but once this ordinance passes, and you reduce it to 30 or more dwellings that are required to have the second access road, that will include us. Now, if this passes, where will that access road go? When will it be there? And...
I don't mean to interrupt your public comment, but I believe that that would be applicable to new development.
All right.
Not to... It would be for any new development that's happening. We're not going to go back in and put roads in existing neighborhoods to provide dual access.
That's not stated in here.
We're trying to... Well, by nature... Ms. Tom McCauley.
Yes, it's my understanding that this applies to new developments. However, if there's a new development that is built, this is my understanding, where there is an older that there could be, I just want to be transparent here, there could be secondary access to older developments as well.
There could be access to older properties as well.
If it were added on to, or if there were situations where it was changed, but I don't see a scenario in which the city is going to go back to existing developments and just pop a new road in. That wouldn't make sense from many standpoints.
That's certainly not clear on this ordinance. So I'm still very concerned about it. I've been there 46 years, and we have not needed an additional access, so that was my concern.
I appreciate you letting us know so much, and we will discuss that when we come to that. Thank you. Okay, so anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items?
Hey, everybody. I'm Rosemary Bates, 395 Devon Chase Hill. I'm here tonight as a citizen and an employee to respectfully ask that you delay a vote on the pay study for a couple of weeks because none of that information has been available to the public. It's my understanding it wasn't relayed to the department heads until today. The public has not seen the final suggestion, nor have we really been given a lot of detail on how these numbers were achieved. And I know in some cases, there are questions, particularly, for example, in my department, which is EDA. And I'd love the opportunity to just have more time to look through that and figure out where some of these numbers came from. That's all I'm asking. Respectful, I love my job. I'm happy with what I make. It's not a criticism of anything. It's just, you're about to make a vote on a huge impact to the budget, and the public and the citizens haven't had an opportunity to review the information. So just a respectful request. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? You may do so at this time. Okay, seeing no one, I would say that we are through with public comment on agenda-related items and move along to mayor's comments. I do have a proclamation to present, but I do want to remind you of upcoming events. First, I'll mention Ms. Kettrell's birthday. I think it's Thursday. Also, I want you to be aware that we have started a Get to Know Gallatin series in cooperation with the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce, and this is a series open to newcomers to Gallatin. I think the parameters are you have to have moved here within the last three years. We had our first session last evening. We'll begin our first day session this Thursday. It happens from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. The first one's happening at the Palace Theater. According to Kim Baker, there is still room in that session, so if that's something you're interested in doing, you can certainly contact the chamber and be a part of that if you would like to. This Thursday evening, the Antique and Classic Car Cruising continues, as it does on Thursday nights, at the Gallatin Civic Center from 4:00 until 8:00. This Friday, I'm really excited that the public power folks from all over the area are having their annual meeting in Nashville, and they choose one charitable project to participate in. And this year, it's going to be picking up trash in the city of Gallatin. I'm sad that it's something that has to be done, but I'm also very grateful that they're bringing, is 107 people, Mr. De Priest, they're bringing 107 people to Gallatin to pick up trash for a few hours on Friday morning, and then they will be meeting over at the Gallatin Department of Electricity for lunch. And so, so appreciative of them doing that, and I want you to be aware that that was happening. There's another Red Cross blood drive at the Civic Center, happening from 11:00 until 4:00. This Friday and Saturday is the Sumner Prevention Coalition Bold Enough Rodeo Challenge. This is an event that we, as a coalition, have been doing for a lot of years to raise money, to support the good work that that organization does in our community. So if rodeo is your thing, this is a great way to show support for that organization. This Saturday is the Second Appetites and Airplanes Music City Executive Airport Breakfast. It's a really fun event. If you've never been, it's great to take kids to. Last month, they had a ton of classic cars, and so many planes flew in for it because the weather was lovely. I don't know if the weather's going to be lovely this weekend or not, but if it is, you can expect a lot of airplanes there. Also, this Saturday is the Kids Fishing Derby at Lock Forest Park. That happens from 8:00 a.m. until noon. Kids can fish without a license. It's always a fun time to come out. Whether your kid's already a fisherman or just wanting to be one, there's a great place for it. Happening Saturday night, close to the Sumner County Museum, is the Songs and Stories at Historic Stonewall. I'm not sure who the songwriter is this weekend, but it's a really nice intimate event where you hear a well-known songwriter performing their own songs. And then, the rodeo is again on Saturday night. That's it for the events. I do want to present this proclamation. I don't know if Anna Stevens is here. I know Ms. Gregory's not. Mr. Hayes, it's going to be you. This is... Come to the podium. You know, many of our council members do have day jobs, and this council member happens to work with the company that's celebrating a very significant day. So I'll read the proclamation, and you can say a few words about your company if you so desire. So this is a proclamation by the mayor. It says, "Whereas State Farm Insurance was founded in the United States on the 7th day of June in the year 1922 by J.C...."
Maherl.
Merrill?
Maherl.
Maherl. Maherl. A farmer from Myrna, Illinois. Sorry, would you please stop my timer, Ms. Tom McCauley? Thank you. And whereas the city of Gallatin recognizes the positive impact the company and its agents have had on our community, as they have been taking care of customers in Tennessee since 1926, and whereas State Farm is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2022, Paige Brown, mayor of the city of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2022, a State Farm Day, and call upon Gallatin residents to observe this day by demonstrating what being a good neighbor is all about through acts of kindness and making people feel welcome. And I do want to say that State Farm has been a tremendous partner in our community, doing so many things. You know, State Farm Third Thursday certainly comes to mind, but you're doing things throughout the year, and they certainly do promote, as in their national brand, to be a good neighbor. And so I appreciate, I'm actually a customer of theirs, and so I appreciate them as a service provider, but also as a community partner. It's all yours, Mr. Hayes.
No, I don't have much to say, but thank you, Mayor. I know it's hard to believe that, you know, I've been around for 100 years, but I don't look that old, but we have, I think there's like 16,000-plus agents all across America, and there's four here in Gallatin, you know, that we've been here, you know, for a long time. And two of us, I think Jeannie and myself, are going on 30 years this year. So it's been a privilege, so I just want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have one more item that I do think is important to share. It's a separate flyer on my desk, and this is Grab and Go Meals for children under 18 happening at the Gallatin Shalom Zone, and it's going to happen every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in June and July from 11:00 to 11:15. So, well, they have a couple of different times and locations. So it looks like 11:00 to 11:15 at Lackey Circle and Alexander Court, from 11:20 to 11:35 at Dogwood Branch and East Camp Trail, from 11:40 to 11:55 at Chapel Ridge of Gallatin, from 12:00 until 12:20 at Greenwood Apartments, and from 12:40 to 1:00 p.m. at Sumner Estates, formerly known as Westington Apartments, which I actually think is in Hendersonville, I think. And I'm going to ask Mr. Hinchell to actually put this on our social media, because I know you're not sitting there with your pencil ready to write things down. So I want to share that with you. Finally, tonight, I just want to share with you, I was asked to judge the James Hawkins Scholarship Essay Contest, and so I read the essays that they brought over to me, and they were all excellent. But this one person, I don't even know who they are, but this one person wrote something that just really touched my heart, and I wanted to share it with all of you because I thought, this is a wise young person, and I'm excited to have them in our community, and I look forward to them being a future leader. So this person, I mean, wrote a whole long essay, but this one paragraph really stood out to me. It says, "Your town, state, or country has to be more than just a place that is there to serve you in your needs. It cannot be a place where you just take. It can't survive. Choosing to be a good citizen is about seeing the place you live with a different lens. Once you see your town as home and the people there as your community, citizenship is easy. Choosing to follow the traffic laws placed becomes more than just trying not to get in trouble. It becomes a chance to keep everyone around you safe and protected. Not littering becomes a way to help the farmers in the area not to have polluted soil and for the children to have clean parks. Voting in elections becomes less about the Instagram posts with a sticker and more about setting up the community to be led by people you think will best help. When you take the all-about-me blinders off, we're able to serve those in our community by being a good citizen." So it was a citizenship essay, and I just thought that was lovely, and I thought it was worth reading to all of you. So thank you for indulging me on that. With that, we will get to the regular agenda, and item number one is the public hearing that I referenced earlier. This is public hearing ordinance 02205-25, and Councilman Hayes will be introducing this.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, amending the Gallatin zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 2.02, Definitions, Article 3.0, Use Classification, Section 3.07, Commercial Activities, Classes and Types, Article 7, Provisions for Mixed Use Districts, Section 7.02, Intent and Description for the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, Section 7.03, Intent and Description of the Mixed Use District, Article 8, Provisions for Commercial Districts, Section 8.01, Intent and Purpose of CC Core Commercial District, Section 8.04, Intent and Purpose of the PGC Plan, General Commercial District, and Section 8.05, Intent and Purpose of the PNC Plan Neighborhood Commercial District, to permit animal care limited as a permitted use and remove the use of animal care with the following conditions, authorizing the revisions to be made to the zoning ordinance for peeling conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
The public hearing on ordinance 02205-25 is now open. If anyone would like to speak to it. Basically, this is about providing for the new version of animal care that didn't exist when we did our ordinances back so many years ago, where it would allow for a larger yard area for an animal care facility. So last chance, if anyone wants to speak. Seeing no one, public hearing on ordinance 02205-25 is closed. Item number two is second reading on the ordinance 02205-26, and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, for municipal purpose for the 2022 tax year and the 2023 fiscal year, tax of eighty and one hundred cent for every $100 of taxable property, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for any discussion. For your reference, that is no increase, so... All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Second reading on ordinance 02205-26 is passed unanimously. Item number three is Resolution R2206-45. Councilwoman Love, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending and adopting the city of Gallatin's new pay plan, and I had planned to just make a motion to discuss it because we haven't really discussed it too much, so I think I will make a motion to defer it.
I'll second that, and then can I ask a question after the second? How many readings? Two? Right?
No, resolution's just one.
Okay, so one. Okay, that's right. That's right. That's right. Okay.
And we have a number in the budget that covers it, so it doesn't have to impact the budget. I agree with deferring it. I do want this council to know that Lori Smiley and Rachel Nichols and Connie Flood worked on this thing all weekend, trying to get everything out, and we were very... And what happened, what delayed it so much, is because all, not all the department heads, several of the department heads had feedback, it went back to the consultant, and then the consultant made changes as requested by the department heads, and then we finally got, I think, it on Friday. And so we were hoping to get it out to you that day with the packets, which also would have gotten it online, but it just didn't come together that easy. So I apologize for that, but they worked so hard over it, and you guys need to know that.
We can defer it and discuss it in our next work session, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor, you know, I mean, I agree with the deferment. I appreciate the hard work that's been put into this, and I think we're moving in the right direction. And, you know, I've had some discussions on several things on here that just didn't jive with each other, you know, when you got the same position, and the pay rates are so different. I know there's different responsibilities in those, but I would just like to add, as I said before, I'd just like to add some explanation on where they come up with some of these figures and the same thing. So I agree, let's defer it, let's look at it, and maybe we can move it on, and then we can still make some changes to it that need to be done.
Well, the next meeting will be the work session. We can have it there, but then we could vote on it at the following council meeting, which would help. You know, our goal is to get this instituted with July 3, right? So...
That was what I didn't...
We can still get it in there at the next meeting.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we're fine if we discuss it at the next council meeting. Mr. Overton, to your point, I mean, the different, I think the consultant felt like by differentiating between the department, and it made a different title versus, because the duties are different, and that's why they're...
And I do.
But I agree that an employee's going to look at it and be like, well, I'm this. Why am I not getting this level?
And that's it. And, you know, if there's, maybe we need to look at it down the road at the point that, you know, if that person in that job description is doing a lot of stuff different, maybe we need to have a job description that fits them and not be, you know, in the same one. So, you understand what I'm saying?
Like admin is an example.
Yeah, like admin, too.
What else? Steve calling admin. I mean, that...
So, you know, admins, one or two or three or whatever should all be the same, and if they're doing something different, we need to have a different title for them instead of having that title. So that's my point.
I think that, I think you don't know what that is, because it's what it is. It's still an admin. But, yeah, we're fine to discuss that and hopefully vote on it the next meeting so we can get it in place. I do think that, I want you to know that Rachel has just been, Ms. Nichols, has been just phenomenal in working with this and helping Connie and I, and Lori, too, just helping us get through this. The department heads have been fabulous. The feedback, by and large, from our department heads is that we're well pleased. We are, you know, looking at a substantial increase in our pay for our employees. The, you know, the interesting thing, and I was having this conversation late today, is that, you know, when you're doing the regular increases like we do, the higher-wage people move way up, and so when the pay study comes, they're okay. It's the lower-wage people, because, I'm sorry, a two-and-a-half percent increase on a $12 or $15 an hour job is not much. And so with the market that we've had, they have, you know, fallen behind, really, in just the last couple of years. But remember that we did do that 10% increase for most of the employees, roughly half of our workforce, back in October, which helped right that ship, and then we are still in a situation where those people are getting an additional increase, which will help put them ahead of the market to some degree. So I am, is it perfect? No, but to think it's going to be perfect is unrealistic, because not every job and every entity has the exact same responsibilities or requirements, but, you know, we're trying to make sure that our employees are fairly compensated. So probably shouldn't say all that when we have a motion to defer, but I did want you to know where I was. We do have a motion to defer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion to defer is passed unanimously, and we will put it on the next work session. So item number four is second reading on the amended ordinance 02205-27, and Councilwoman George, that is you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. I so move.
Second.
Another motion by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilwoman Love. There are some things that I'm going to ask that you all amend in this budget, as we did before, and these were things that I did not include in the initial budget. They were kind of tied to the pay study, but not really. Let me just step through them, and you guys give me feedback. They will have a budgetary impact, I'll tell you what that is. But the first thing is related to the police department. We have shift differentials for our police officers who are working evenings, which is, I think, that two-to-10 shift, and then overnight, and that shift differential has been 15 cents and 25 cents, I think, since the 80s. And so what the police department is asking for is that we increase that shift differential to 60 cents for evenings and a dollar for overnight. The total impact of that is $65,500. They are also asking, we have had an on-call rate of $50 for, again, quite some time. Would like to see that change to $100. That has a financial impact of $21,600. We're certainly in a situation where we can do that if you would support amending the budget in that way. So that would be my first ask of you guys.
Motion to amend.
A motion to amend by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion questions on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, so that is one amendment. The other thing, this was one position that kind of I slipped on, and this is a position in the finance department. What is happening in the finance department is you have an employee that's been a full-time employee there that is going to a very part-time employee, eventually phasing out. And so when I looked at the budget and treated that as a new position, what I should have done is treated it as an existing position with a reclassification, because what Ms. Nichols would like to do is go back to the deputy director circumstance that she had previously and eliminate that position that she had previously. It would have an impact beyond what that employee was making of about $22,000? I forgot to bring that sheet with me. Salary plus benefits, so you figure additional for benefits. So if you are open... Salary plus benefits, so you figure additional for benefits. So, if you are open to putting that adjustment in there, I would ask that you amend. If you're not, we'll revisit it a later date. It's this council's decision. Motion by Councilman Hayes to amend appropriately, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Is there any discussion on that? Questions?
That's about $107,000 amendment.
Well, you are taking out the previous employee's salary, which would have been in the probably $80,000 range, $70,000 range. They're going to very part-time phasing out, and then this would come in at that new range. So, that's what that is. Taking away a lower-paid position, granted, and putting in a higher-paid position, but it's almost the reverse of what we did a few years ago. And I think Ms. Nichols just feels like this is more than that department. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And this is something that I will actually put on the work session for next week, since we are gonna bring the pay study back to it, but I think I'll mention it to you, because I'll give you time to consider it. I am going to ask, because in this pay study, we do have several employees who are what I would call topping out. They're at the end of the scale in the next couple of years. And some of these employees are very key employees to the city of Galton. They have great institutional knowledge, very specific experience, either working with T-DOT or, you know, whatever it may be. And so, what I think would be a good form for this, the city, is for the mayor, whomever that may be at whatever point in time, to have the discretion or the latitude to extend those steps out for those key employees. It's a very low number of employees. It would be in a rare circumstance. I could certainly see it being employed. Say a year came along, and we were having a very difficult year, and we didn't do a COA for our employees, or a COA wasn't warranted. Some of those key employees would be going backwards if they got no increase whatsoever. I think if they got a COA, they're probably okay, but if they don't, they're kind of going backwards, because their benefits cost more and the like. So, I think that would be a good strategy for the city to adopt going forward. It would help us in those few gap years between pay studies, maybe like years three, four, and five, before we got to another pay study. So, that's gonna be my ask of y'all, and I welcome you to follow up with me or ask any questions now. But I will put it on the work session for next week. I don't know, I don't know, should we do that in the form of a resolution, Susan? Would you recommend?
Could you add it to the pay study resolution, since you've deferred it?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be one option. Or you can do it as a separate resolution. Either would work.
Okay, what I'll do, I'll prepare both. We'll have both prepared, and then you can consider those and ask any questions, certainly, between now and then or next week. Okay, so with that, we will move on now to item number, wait, we are on item number four. I'm so sorry. We've amended it with the ask about the police department.
Mayor, there was a second amended budget that was put in. Have we covered all of those things? I did not think so. I think those need to be discussed.
I thought, I thought that was our discussion today, Ms. Nichols. I'm sorry.
In your packet, there was a second amended budget. It's behind the amended one in the blue sheet, and that is where we actually moved the salary study money out to each individual department. Before, we just had it lumped in one line in each different, each of the funds, and in that amended budget, it actually moves it out to each of the individual departments.
So, how do you feel is the best way to do that? Do you think we should do that now, or should we do it?
Yes, please.
I agree with you. Thank you. So, is the council comfortable with that? That gets all the numbers in the appropriate line.
Yes.
All right, so that would be the other amendment. The other amendments...
They need a motion to approve that.
Okay, a motion then to amend that, if someone...
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor of that amendment, go ahead, and delineating those line items to the appropriate lines. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, that amendment's passed unanimously. We have those two amendments. Ms. Homicoli, I thought you were referencing the amendments that were made at the previous meeting, but they are the ones that are already included. So, those are the only amendments that we need, Ms. Nichols, right? Nothing else is missing. I had that in my notes, too. So, we're back on the budget as amended. Is there any discussion on that? Any questions? Anything that doesn't, anyone doesn't have a level of comfort with? Getting a lot done in this year's budget. It's exciting. And of course, a lot of it has to do with the grant dollars that we have programmed in, so. With that, all in favor of ordinance 02205-27, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Second reading on amended ordinance 02205-27, as amended, is approved. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 02205-28. Councilman Overton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Fire Protection Prevention, Section 9-61, by amending the number of residential dwellings and the development that would require two separate fire apparatus, access roads, and I so move, and I'd like to speak on it.
A motion by Councilwoman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Mr. Overton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know where this comes from, but I got several calls today. And we, I just want to explain a little bit. This comes from our codes department, and the reason it is, is for a safety situation. This has nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with Nichols Lane, Lock 4, none of those. We have lots and lots and lots of subdivisions right now that has one way in and one way out. A lot of them. There's no way this council can go back and put a road in every single one of those. We don't have the money to do it, first of all, but that's not the intention here. The intention here is for strictly fire safety, because if a major fire breaks out in that subdivision, you need another way in and out. And most of these are not as big even as Nichols Circle. Nichols Circle is a big area, and you can cover a lot of area, even though it's a one-way street that gets in there, there's, you know, there's other ways. But this is, this is about fire protection and fire protection only. It has nothing to do with that subdivision. I assure you that there's no discussion on that subdivision it has to do with. It's strictly a fire safety issue, because we do have lots and lots of streets now in the city of Galton, and we're trying to prevent that going forward, that if we, if we have a new development that comes in, and wants a one-way-in, one-way-out street, and it's, you know, a sizable subdivision, we just went through it here, I don't know, a couple of years ago, out in Twin Eagles, I think's probably the last one that we had a major discussion on. And we had one way in and one way out there, and you had a lot of houses in there. And thank goodness, you know, at some point, they'll be opening that up, and you'll have another entrance, another exit out of there. But that's all this is about. It has nothing to do with Nichols Circle, Lock 4 area, or nothing else. This is a citywide area that our codes department felt really unsafe about and that we need to correct.
Well, and I think I'm correct in saying that this has existed in our code, just this is changing the number, the base of the number, and certainly, we do have subdivisions that exceed that 50 number already, but we're not going back and changing those. We're just changing it for future development for the new number, which is what it applies to. There are so many things that happen in our code that we can't go back and apply to existing neighborhoods, but we apply going forward.
I don't know where the rumor got started, that we were just doing this just because we're gonna go put a road through Nichols Circle and that, whatever that street is out there. But it's not, no discussion about that whatsoever. It's not what we want to do. We want to do this for the safety. And anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, because a lot of people's called me on it, and they thought we was doing this just because we wanted to go stick a road in there. Well, if this passes, and we go stick a road in every single development that we have that has one way in, one way out, we would be broke. So, that's not what this...
Should we add the words "new development"? No?
Engineering Department wouldn't be happy with that, I can tell you, because the best example in the world was Twin Eagles, and that's, you know, that's a huge subdivision that we had out there, okay? And so, if you had that in there, that you'd never put another road in Twin Eagles, when that passed, I mean, you would really be defeating your purpose. But, you know, like I said, this, this has nothing to do with those subdivisions. It's their grandfathered in. You're not gonna go put another road in there. You know, if the development around some of these other subdivisions come open, I'm sure our engineering department is gonna request that we do it, but we don't have to do that, okay? So, you know, he, and that's, that's his, that's what his expertise is. I mean, he's here to be sure that we're as safe as we can be, and we open up roads, but, but there's no discussion whatsoever to put a road through Nichols Circle and Lock 4 Road. And I just want to get that on the record for everybody to understand.
Any other questions, discussions, suggestions?
There's no way of adding anything that designates what we're trying to do, or is there?
This is, I mean, we don't do that with everything else, and it applies like that, so I understand where, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but I don't, I don't know if it's proper form, because then that would give you the impression that something that doesn't have that word in it would apply to existing developments. You see the disconnect that we're creating, whereas in all that we do, you know, we talk about signs all the time. We can't go out and make a business change in an existing sign, but when the business changes, we can make them bring that to our current code.
But I do see how the neighbors could be concerned. Oh, I do, too. I agree 100%. And somebody got them really stirred up, because they said that's why we're passing this, is because we're gonna put a road through there, and that's not why this discussion came up. This discussion come up for codes department and felt safety reasons and it's safety reasons only, so.
Homicoli, do you have suggestions?
I don't. This is for when we are approving new developments, for them to get approved, anything that has 30, it used to be 50, now it's 30. But I do want to, to add, that doesn't mean if there is a neighborhood that exists in another neighborhood, Nick or Bill may want to jump in here, that is built near that, that doesn't mean there won't be an access road. That's, that's not what this is about, but when we make blanket statements that we are not going to do that, I just need to be transparent that there are places in the city right now where you have roads that are stubbed out, and if the development continues to be developed, there is the intention, at least at this point, a lot of these were done years and years ago, that there will be an access road. So, I don't want to make a blanket statement that we are not going, and we're never gonna do that, because that is not exactly accurate. That's not what this is about. Those are two separate issues. This is about, from the codes department, for new developments, when they're approved, they're required to have two entrances if they're 30.
Susan, even with this, any development that's existing that asks for new roads to be cut through them, this body and the planning department has every right to deny that request, correct?
Or allow.
Or allow, correct?
And that's about the interconnectivity, and that's nothing...
So, but I'm just wanting to make the point.
It's not related to this.
It's not related to this at all.
But it's a side issue, that I just wanted to make sure that we are being transparent and that we are explaining. They're two separate issues, but we can't say that if there is a subdivision that exists that only has one way in and one way out at this time, and something else is developed near it, that there won't be an access road. Is that accurate, Mr. Tuttle, Mr. McCord?
Mr. Stewart shaking his head yes.
I see this as being about the type of development where you have a long, narrow street, 25 units on each side, and we don't want to see that happen. They're nodding in agreement with me as well. No, Mr. Stewart is not. Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Perhaps everyone would feel comfortable if someone from codes speaks to this.
Mr. Stewart, looks like you just got nominated.
Thank you. What you said is exactly right. If we have a subdivision, let's say it has 25 homes in it, and they decide to add another phase to it, and then they're gonna have to add an access to it. But the existing subdivision out there that we have now in place, it's gonna stay just like it is. We do not, we do not attempt to make those changes. This code comes directly out of the fire code and the building code for fire access, and there are multiple ways to get that done. We looked at one this week, and I'm sure that Nick has seen it now, that where he's gonna do a boulevard in and make a circulation when he goes in, he's gonna split. So, if I'm fighting a fire here, and I need a medical emergency over here, I got a road to get ambulance or the EMTs to over here. So, it's necessary for the, for the safety of our citizens that we have access. You know, we, we see it a lot every day out here, where these, they're parking on the streets, they're doing all these things, and that makes it tough on fire apparatus to get in. But there are several different options that we have to get them in there, where Hammerhead turns, we can go in and get the trucks back out. If we exceed 30 houses, we want two entrances, and that doesn't affect any existing subdivision we have at this time.
Thank you. Miss Petrelli, I would ask that you articulate that last statement he made in the minutes, that Mr. Stewart stated that this would not affect any existing subdivisions as they currently are. Anyone else? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02205-28. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading is passed unanimously. Concerned, ladies and gentlemen, there will be a second reading on that, because it's an ordinance. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 02206-29. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from 2021 Water Sewer Revenue Bond Issue Series 2021B in the amount of $15,4,257.16, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Hayes. Opening the floor for any discussion. List of where those funds are being allocated to what projects in your binder? No questions? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02206-29. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate with a no. First reading on ordinance 02206-29 passes unanimously. Item number seven is first reading on ordinance 02206-30. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02109-53, appropriating funds for 2021, 2022 carryover capital projects to correct a clerical error. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02206-30. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number eight is first reading on ordinance 02206-31. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02109-55 to correct a clerical error in the numbering of the street department equipment account listed in the ordinance. I so move.
A motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? First reading on ordinance 02206-31. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item nine is first reading on ordinance 02206-32. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment, order number 0203-10, to correct clerical error in the number of Miracle Park Field Account and clerical error in the number of lighted crosswalk account as listed in the order, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02206-32. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 10 is first reading on ordinance 02206-33. Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 02205-21 to correct a clerical error in the numbering of the insurance recovery account listed in the ordinance. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Any questions? First reading on ordinance 02206-33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number 11 is first reading on ordinance 02206-34. Councilwoman George. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds in the amount of $179,000 for parks and recreation deployments. And I'd like to say something about that.
So move.
A motion by Councilman Overton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Now opening the floor for discussion. Ms. George, you're recognized.
For the funds for?
Pardon me?
Are, are these funds specified what they're for in the park?
Um, it's what we talked about at the work session, where he has some shortages in several of his areas and does not have the budget capacity to cover it. And, talked about it last week. I'm disappointed that it's happening, but I do think it's necessary to allocate these funds so that we can get our parks department through the rest of the year.
Okay, my conversation, or my comment is, uh, the last we talked about it was, uh, that was because of the gas prices. And when I'm looking at this allocation, there's a lot of it that's, uh, has nothing to do with gas. It's repairs and maintenance and the golf course is like 80, like $90,000.
Yeah, I think he referenced several areas where they were having issues with expenses. I recall a mention of fertilizer, which we've all heard about, the cost of fertilizer going up. Certainly fuel has had an impact. It has had an impact on all of our departments. And I think the coming year, it's really going to require some very close monitoring of our budget and probably us making some mid-year cuts to stay in budget. Or appropriations, depending on how things go, but I'm not optimistic. I don't know if Mr. Brown would like to speak to any of the other impacts that have, I mean, we were just talking this morning, and he mentioned to me that the cost of golf cart batteries had tripled. So it's a lot of those kinds of things that I think have added up to create a, a negative impact on the budget as a whole.
These are pretty much inflationary costs.
Yes. And I, and I'd be more than happy to give anybody a copy. I don't have a copy tonight, I was going to make a, but to list everything that this money is going to. For example, the, uh, at the golf course, the, the adicost and horticost supplies, it's $8,000 is going to push us right to the limit of even having enough to finish out this year. That stuff, the fertilizer and seed is unreal price. You know, in, at the golf carts, we've had the golf carts for eight years, which is almost an unusual eight years. Normally, they change them out every four years.
And I'm going to interrupt you because you just approved to purchase more this evening, so.
Sorry?
I said, in the budget, there's new golf carts, so.
Yes, so, in, 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 but, but time we now get to golf carts, it's probably going to be eight to 10 months. So we're probably going to have to get some new batteries for some of the old ones that we have now. And that's what's caused the, the rate to go up and our budget to go up because we haven't replaced those batteries in the old carts we have now because we ordered these golf carts, well, we put our order in knowing that if it didn't pass in the budget, they, the company just wasn't shipping. They are a year and a half out.
We had a cra- increasing green fees lately.
And Craig would tell you, he knows.
Ain't kidding about that.
It, uh, you know.
Tripled in price, I mean.
And triple, the batteries have tripled. I mean, where it used to be $800 for a golf cart, it's $25,000 to $3,000 now. One golf cart. One golf cart goes out, we're hoping that we have, we do have, still have a couple of large tournaments. If some of them goes out, we'll set them over there to the side. At, at Civic Center, the pool suppliers, the chemicals, of course, they had that explosion out there at Texas or wherever, they have tripled. And I could, I could, and I'd be more than happy to give you, or give all of y'all this list of every, you know, we've got a, a building that, uh, one of the repairs at the building at Triple Creek. We had storm damage, $5,000 deductible. I didn't have $5,000 put in deductible, so that, hopefully we'll cover that too. And then the vehicle repairs, it's unreal what parts are now. Unreal. It's just, I don't know why. But, you know, we've got a lot of lawnmowers, a lot of old vehicles. And it just, it's just costing a lot to repair and keep them going. Chemicals, toilet paper, paper towels. All, and, and we're, we're big in, in supplies and stuff. We buy more probably than most people. And it's just got out of control of the price. Can't control the price.
Have we increased green fees recently, Dave?
I'm sorry?
Have we increased green fees?
Yes, and we've increased some, some Civic Center costs. Our food has gone up, we've gone up, we've increased a bunch on our food. Of course, vending machines is a, almost a break even, a little. But the concessions, they're doing great. The golf course is doing awesome, best it's ever done in the history of the golf course. So, and, uh, I mean, it's just a fact that.
Still expensive to run, though. But my concern is that if this increase is so great here, why, what's going to happen to all the other departments? Because they're going to be feeling the same heat with a lot of these same items.
We're going to have to monitor budgets very closely in this coming year, especially related to fuel costs. And, and we're all aware of it, there were increases in every budget this year. It's going to be a challenge. I mean, we were having the conversation this morning about take home vehicles, just strategy and utilizing equipment, things. We're going to be saving money every way we possibly can because we're going to have to. You know, accountable to our taxpayers. I think our department heads can rise to the challenge probably like none other.
I think we should sell the, the golf course. I think we should sell the golf course. We'd have to.
I don't think everybody can afford to go to Fairview, though.
They could at a private club.
Uh-oh, we don't need to do that. Strike that.
Let's not have that discussion this evening.
Have they, um, everybody bringing their own cart?
He's got people doing that. Are there any other questions about this or thoughts?
Maybe we could get more tournaments into town to make up the difference. Softball or whatever.
We just had the Ford Glass had not been coming to the Long Haul Golf Course for the last few years. They started coming back today because they come and heard about how good the golf course was and everything. So we picked up, I think, 28 new, new players today, and they will come back probably once a week. You know, but no, you know, they'll tell you they're going to come back and they'll find another course and go to. We, we're picking up, our tournaments are picking up.
We, didn't we lose a tournament because we didn't have a bathrooms that was fixed or the water?
See, that's the problem we're having. We have, we have a complex at Menace Park. The whole complex is shut down. You can go practice, but there's no concession, there's no water. The water line is put in in 1974. It's galvanized line. So, you know, it's, it's, I guess corroded, stopped up, whatever. So we're, we're, we're putting in a new line. So until we get some operating supplies and stuff, we can't even buy a two inch, we can't even buy a pipe. Put in lines unless we get our budgets adjusted. So that's some of the things that we're running to. We didn't know that was going to happen this year. The utility departments, they've been working with us hard. They've been trying to get us a tap. I hope we get one this week. And then we're going to get this, we lost a baseball tournament because there was no restrooms. We're just having some, you know, aging problems too.
I, I still feel that if we could ever get our fields up to where they should be as far as with lights and all that, that would be a huge access to the seat of Gotham because then we could have our parks open later at night and still having to close them down at night simply because we don't have lights. So we have parks and stuff, we just don't have them up to date like they need to be. So hopefully in the future, we can get something done about that because it's not.
Shouldn't we be getting a report on the park evaluation here in June?
I don't know if we'll get it in June, probably by July, I'd say. Look, I have another public meeting.
They're wrapping it up.
Yeah. I think that'll help us a lot, too. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Brown? Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. This is first reading on the ordinance 02206-34. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously, I think. All right, that concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I would ask if any of this council has other business to bring forward at this time. Councilman, uh, Vice Mayor Fennell.
I've got a couple of things. One, we got off on the issue about the fireworks been over at Twin Eagles, about the proximity of the stand versus the houses. Do we ever have anybody from codes go out there and look at that? So that's probably about what it was last year? So, okay.
Well, and, and, and the proprietor of that stand happened to pop by my office yesterday. He was very regretful that he had created stress for the neighborhood. He said he had no idea until one of the neighbors actually stopped and mentioned to him. He really did, I think, feel terrible about it. But then he also proceeded to point out to me, I think it's not the only stand he has. And I guess he's friends with other stand people. Apparently, there are other situations where there's actually fireworks stands closer to residential areas. And one of them's close to your store backing up to Grandview subdivision, which I'd never thought about it from that perspective.
He visited with me also, so.
Okay, okay.
I've, I've got one more thing, too. I think this will go out to the sewer department, water department. There was a lady in Fox, I mean, uh, Kennesaw area. Her name is Tanya, Tanya Jackson, that had a sinkhole issue. You, you got that under control. Will y'all follow up with her, please? You have today? I was kind of strange, she called me today and said nobody's called her, but. Okay, all right, that's it, I'm done.
Anyone else with other business?
I have a question. Nick, did you do anything on that Hancock light sign for right turn? Hancock and 109? Okay.
Anyone else? All right. We will conclude other business and move now to public recognition on non-agenda related items. If you have an item not on the agenda, you may come forward and speak to it. I would ask that you be respectful as this is a meeting of the Allison City Council.
Oh, good evening. It's Patrick Reeners, 317 Malone Drive. And I, actually, I got a couple of subjects now. One is that I hope if you're in a, a sublet division that is run by the homeowners association, that you might talk to them about another way out. Or maybe the city, if it's really tight, can put no parking on the street. So in the older divisions, the fire truck can get in and out. Or the city can come up with, the city citizens can come up with some pumps and, and maybe volunteer the people that pools in our neighborhood and get some hoses maybe from old fire departments and be ready for their own fire if they need it. Because it's all about working with your community, too, not just what your community can do for you because you pay a little taxes. Secondly, I don't think anybody should be able to come up here and give false information to this board because it's not an opinion board. It gets shown on TV. And then maybe because you guys want to have oversight, you could look into issues that are brought up here. And if you wasted money and found out them to be false, you know, you could hold the person accountable. You know, I come up here many times, talk about facts. And from what I found out, maybe it's true, maybe that's not going on anymore. But I think some of the people here really got a good heart and they, they need to be heard. And so many people are just trying to cause some waves. So that's what a sandbar is for. You guys are the sandbar. You know, if you guys have to interrupt your meeting because someone's falsely stating something against your reputation, I think that's a disruption to the city meeting. I think it should be handled accordingly. And I also think other people should really look into what you're, what happens with the city, that you guys advertise this is going to happen. Some people might not know that. Some people talking to you guys might be the first time hearing about something they could have had a difference in and think about what they're saying. Because they might be truthful. You know, people they didn't know, they posted in the paper and didn't know they could say something about it. You know, give a little heart out to those people. With other people, man, you guys are the sandbar. And if they're disrupting your meeting, I think you need to interrupt your meeting and address them like I heard a couple of weeks ago and set it straight. And I don't know, trespass them if they're causing a disturbance. Have a good day.
Good evening, my name is Mary Janung. I live on 1100 Lock 4 Road. And I'm here to talk to you about, I reviewed your video from last week of the mayor, uh, of your council meeting. I think it was maybe the week I was on vacation. And it talked about the 20, the, the 2030, the plan to make rural versus suburban, you know, the map. It was green and you guys had deferred it back to the, um, planning commission to perhaps change it back, change it to maybe a suburban or a hi- a higher density residential. And my concern is out in the Nichols Block and the Lock 4 Peach Valley area and Woods Ferry. So I don't know if you're aware, but in 2007, there was a, a study done at the, it's called the Planning Report, Widening of Lock 4 Road, Nichols Lane to Lock 4 Park. And in this document, it says that Lock 4 Road is very, well, considerably, if you read it and you had any sense, you would realize it was very dangerous. That was 15 years ago. The road is very dangerous. I know it because I live on that road. And in the document, it says that they, you know, the different type of widening of Lock 4 Road. Today's standards, it would be different. You're going to be, first of all, it'd be very, very expensive. And, and in my thinking, to bring this up, is that if you want to change us from rural to a suburban type environment, that's very dangerous for us that live out there, especially with traffic, cars. I just had a guy two weeks ago while I was on vacation, come down Lock 4 Road, lost control, landed in my front yard, hit a tree and totaled his car. So I have a great deal of concern for this. It doesn't, the plan for, to change it will go against, um, the community, the community that we have out there. And we don't want this out here, out there. We can't handle big density out there. I know there's a proposal coming for the Green Farm. I know you're all aware of it. It's coming up for planning and we've talked, we have had, um, an open meeting with, uh, D.R. Horton, which is the developer. And it doesn't meet what we are out there. And it's unsafe. It really is unsafe. And I think about the, the lady that came up and talked about the fire, fire, um, changing the fire safety, which is very important. Because when the development out on Lock 4 Road at the end, we came back in front of this body. I don't know if all of you were here at that time, but we said at that time, this is unsafe. There is no, in, there is only two exits, in and out of that subdivision. But that area is not equipped to handle big subdivisions. I would like you to consider not changing the rural part of that plan. I know you have plans for it, I know some of people have ideas for it. But please, consider what, and if you don't know what's in it, I'd be glad to give somebody this copy. But I really would like you to consider the fact that changing it to a higher density or a suburban approach is going to be very unsafe for us that live out there. And you're going to have to take the homes that are out there. You will have to condemn a lot of our properties and take our land. And so that means that people that live on Lock 4 and Peach Valley will lose part of their yards. I may have a road in my front door. So I just really need you to think about what you're doing. And consider what we, what we're asking, because we're not going to go away about this. And I appreciate you for listening to me, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Janung. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Pauscrew. I don't have any new business, I just want clarification on the first, uh, action item that was on the list and regarding the animal welfare. Was that one approved?
First reading, it has to go to a second reading.
Okay, and how does that take place?
Um, well, the second reading will be in two weeks.
In two weeks, perfect.
And it, and it did pass unanimously tonight.
Excellent.
That was public hearing.
I'm sorry, you were right. So we've already had first reading, so public hearing, uh, second reading will be in two weeks. I'm sorry, that's why I was public hearing.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm Alyssa McDowell. I live at ten thirty-one East Nichols Circle. And, um, I want, I wanna say that I love Galton. My dad came here in nineteen fifty-five with Tennessee Valley Authority. I have seven brothers and sisters, and we all graduated from Galton High School. In the TVA life, that's extremely rare. I love Galton. This is my city. Twenty-eight years ago, Ron and I bought a piece of property out on Nichols Circle, and we built our dream house. And it's our little piece of paradise. And I know there are plans out there. We're looking at the traffic on Nichols Lane has become ridiculous. I pass people at a forty-five mile an hour speed zone driving seventy every single day. It, you know, once they put that light at the end of one oh nine and Nichols Lane, it tripled. They don't have any respect. I know it's people that drive through, because the people that live there don't drive seventy miles an hour. So my concern is that as these developments come forward and we back up, our property backs up to a piece, not the green property, that we expect to be developed. I beg you guys to think about the people that are already there, that are already invested in where we are. I ask you, you know, uh, I spoke to Jimmy at some point about, we've had damage from blasting over at the Publix. There's, used to be a part of a requirement for development that there would be pre-blast surveys. You never hear of that anymore. I guess there's too many houses to survey.
There is still, but it, it, it depends on the proximity to the blasting.
Well, we're a mile and a half from where they're blasting.
I think it's only a thousand feet, if I'm not mistaken.
And they blasted at Patterson Farms. So it's, and, and when you consider that what's behind us is gonna be developed, it's gonna be even closer. So regardless of that, I just ask you guys to keep those of us who are already there, who love this community, who want to stay in this community, who want our children to stay in this community, that when these big subdivisions or these big developers come in, you think about those of us that are already here and who already love our community. I thank you for your time.
My name is Steve Sudbury. I live at thirteen twenty-five East Main Street. I came here at night, just didn't have anything else to do. Wasn't gonna say anything. And, uh, Eileen, you're a good friend of mine. We gotta stop talking about selling Galton's, uh, golf course. I have been fortunate enough to travel with my grandson all over the state of Tennessee, in North Carolina, playing in golf tournaments. I can tell you that David Brown and his staff out there do an outstanding job. That golf course didn't get voted number one, because it's not any good. There are many of us that have been members at Fairview. I've traveled all over the United States with Paige's dad playing golf. And I promise you, there's not a better community golf course anywhere. If you read the paper last week about Nashville's public courses, they're slam full. They are actually doing a study now about being open from five o'clock till dark in the summer, because they have estimated they're losing five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from golf fees and cart rentals, because they make everybody have a cart in no later than seven o'clock, when we still have two hours of light to play. Okay? I just played in a tournament out there a couple of weeks ago, the Chris Duck Tournament. The course is in excellent shape. And David was correct when he commented about PVC pipe and plastic materials. I owned a company here in Galton for thirty-five years. I've sold all that material and two-inch pipe. And David Kellogg can tell you, the two-inch pipe is up about a dollar and a quarter to a dollar eighty a square, a foot, a lineal foot, just in the past six months. And it was up before that. Uh, fertilizer is three times today. I've been on the board at Galton Country Club. It's three times today what it was a year and a half ago. The price of sand is up, believe it or not. You would think we got plenty of it, but we don't, because they have to push it up the river to unload it. That's fuel, and that's time. And so things are going up. The golf cart issue, eight years for a golf cart is way beyond the life of most golf carts. If it wasn't for the staff out there taking care of them and watching them, we probably wouldn't have a half of them still running. And I will also submit to you that the lights at the ball field, Mr. Alexander, have had the main poles with the electricity pull to the base of them for ten, twelve years, David? And there's no lights on them. The poles just sitting there. And those poles are about twenty-two thousand dollars apiece. Now, the lights are expensive, but we should've long put those lights on those poles. We're missing softball tournaments because of that. And yes, softball tournaments are down a little bit over time, but the cities that have the facilities are getting the tournaments. But the golf course issue really bothers me. And I came to hear that tonight, because I heard rumors that there had been mentions prior about selling that golf course. Half of that golf course, when I moved here, was a dump. More than half of it was a dump. You couldn't get certification to build anything on it, in my estimation. I'm not an engineer, but I'm, also don't think I'm stupid. So I will tell you that a portion of that golf course could probably never be used for anything other than what it's used for. And I submit to you, it's one of the finest in middle Tennessee, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition of non-agenda-related items closed. And that brings us to...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you for being with us this evening. Go out, have a great night, and please treat each other with kindness.